How are we doing here? Now, you're ready here, Winston. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges, absent. Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Odin, absent. Ms. Ross-Burchan?
Here.
Mr. Klein-Dietz?
Here. Will all please rise for the flag salute? You place your hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Now we'll go around the table with our self-introductions of our cabinet membership. Who'd like to start?
Larry Hokenettle, Village Fest Chairman.
Leo Cohen, Public Arts Chairman.
Philip Platchell, Planning Commission Chairman.
Bruce Pishore, Parks and Recreation.
Richard Hausrup, President, Library Board.
Bill Feingold, Human Rights Commission.
Jim Iserman, Historic Site Preservation.
Chuck Shield, Airport Commission.
Hal Ball, Administrative Appeals Board.
Thank you. You all know the council, of course. Thank you. Let's turn now to reporting on the posted agenda by our city clerk. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you have before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday.
Thank you. We'll turn now to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council during public comments, please do so at this time. Very good. Seen, known. We'll close public comments. We'll go right to our discussion and action items. First off, welcome back to the members of the cabinet. As you well know, this is a quarterly interface between chairs of each of the respective boards and commissions. The intent is to have a healthy and hearty discussion and dialogue. You tell us what you know about what's going on in your respective silos and we somewhat structure the silos. That's an organizational term. We'll bring you up to speed. No, 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 no. It's not a military term. No, 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 no. You guys have got war on the mind. I'm sorry about that. What do you do if I say cross-matrix? Are you all scared on that one too? Okay, alright. I'll go back to the old term of cross-pollination. You guys are real simple on that one. I had no questions in those days. You understand cross-pollination. No need for slide shows on that one. We structure again an agenda that allows you some format. The intent really is to get an idea of what it is you're working on, give us an idea of what your concerns, your priorities are. Tonight's meeting allows you the chance to give us sort of an annual report. Many of you gave us a formal written report and you have, of course, the choice of walking us through that and giving us a sort of a snapshot. And then we'll go through the remainder of the of the agenda. Tonight, though, our presentation is based on a website and the intent at that point will be to find out what it is we have as a website for the city of Palm Springs. Some of the ideas we have for changing that website and then get some interface from you, some ideas as to how we can better serve each of you in your respective disciplines, not silos, disciplines, so that we can obviously get more information out for our for our public. Okay? So again, welcome. And we'll go to the first item, which is the board and commission annual reports. And we'll guess we'll start with Larry and see what you've got. Larry, I think you've got a report in here. And if you have extra copies to hand out to other members of the cabinet, unless you all have a pack, don't you? Very good. Yes, she is something, didn't she? Alright, we're gonna go to the Village Fest. Larry?
Alright. As you know, Village Fest is in our 11th year. There we go. Excuse me. Village Fest is in our 11th year. We had our annual birthday party last March. Went quite well. Served a lot of cake, had a lot of people. Currently now, the Village Fest board is reviewing all participating vendors for compliance with rules and regulations and is sort of an ongoing problem with people bringing in unauthorized products, so we're always having to stay on top of them to keep them in check a little bit. The board is reviewing the budget to contribute to the success of Village Fest. November, we had 142 vendors. December, January, we had 185 and we're down to 140 right now. We had our meeting earlier today. We approved 10 more vendors today, so it's sort of holding its own. We had a last season, an increase in vendor fees and vendors have been starting earlier in the season and staying longer in the season, so we have been able to bankroll a little bit of money. We're about $35,000 in the black right now. We've cut some overtime on the staff, which helped a little bit. And we are still after restrooms. And we've been working on that for a while. I know you guys have been working on a little bit, but with the, some of the monies we have, maybe we could get some restrooms.
That's what we're caucusing on over here, as you're putting together.
Yeah, so. Yeah, it's right down the hall. Yeah. I've been on the board for six years and all six years I've been requesting this same item.
Well, I appreciate your consistency, sir.
I let it go at that. I just say it once a season and that's all. We are working on a solution. We're gonna have a little situation with parking for our vendors when the Desert Inn Fashion Plaza construction starts. That's where a lot of our vendors park now, behind the buildings there. And so we're looking at some other areas, perhaps to the east and south of Cockpits, El Segundo area. So that's gonna be quite a challenge because we're gonna need to pick up quite a bit of just vendor parking. So we need to start thinking about that a little bit. We have some time before construction starts, so if we start working on some sites, we should be okay. For the year to come, we're working with vendors to upgrade their booths. And that's there again. It's always challenging to keep them up to snuff what we're after, to keep them looking nice and clean. Everybody gets loose. After a while, they get comfortable and sort of slack off on their appearance. So we're trying to lean on that a little bit because that's, you know, part of our image is to look nice. Let's see, we're gonna schedule board members to maybe twice monthly randomly to walk through and inspect all the booths and so we can see what we could do as far as keeping the quality up. It's sort of is a hard thing. There's just five people on the board and we have 140 vendors and they all always seem to know when we're coming, so they're cleaning up, you know, when they know we're coming, so you know, it's sort of a random inspection we need to do.
You could always send Leo in, you know.
Yeah. We've been trying to revitalize and refresh our entertainment. We have a lot of the entertainers are, a lot of the same ones that we've had. They're good, but still we like to try to get a little different mix in so people don't get too bored with it, the same thing all the time, so we're working on different entertainment. They've had that big, huge rocking horse down there. I don't know if you guys saw that or not. It was pretty nice. It drew a lot of people. And we need some new commissioners. We are short one now. I imagine a lot of the other boards are short commissioners too. We're short one now and basically that's in the jewelry department and so I don't know if, how many more applications we've had to fill that. This, into this term, there'll be two more board members that terms are up, so we're gonna actually have three spots that are gonna be, have to be filled. So we need to, at our meeting today, we talked maybe on the jewelry category, maybe loosening that up a little bit. Because we don't per se take in a lot of, you know, jewelry that's jeweler quality, it's more handcrafted jewelry type items and you know, the board feels that they've picked up enough on the jewelry aspect to be able to, you know, read the quality to see if it's something that is not handmade by the vendor or something that they're just buying and modifying a little bit. So it's good to have a jeweler, but you know, if we're gonna have a vacancy because we can't find one, we need to perhaps adjust a little bit, loosen up a little bit on that to fill the spot. So that's into my report, basically.
Very good. Thank you, Larry. Questions on Village Fest? I want to go to the heart of the bathroom issues. What do we got? Where are we and what do we need to do? Give us an idea. What did we budget last year? What's the cost expected to be on this? Mr. Ready, what have you got?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have approximately $35,000. The, I believe the recommended or what the capacity was about twice that amount of money. I've just directed our staff to do a couple of things. One, we have the option potentially of buying two smaller. Again, we could put one on each end of Village Fest or one larger one and that's a decision that I'd like the Village Fest board to help us make. But we have a budget of $35,000. I don't know if Village Fest has some capital dollars. They want to contribute to get the larger or the upgraded version, but we're ready to go ahead with the the middle-of-the-road version, if you will, for the $35,000 at this point. We originally thought we could get the better version, but the $35,000 will not get the larger capacity or the upgraded version, is what it comes down to.
What do we look at originally? How many fixtures was each of the the men and the women? How big was that?
I think it's two apiece. Two and two is what we're originally looking at.
The $35,000, we just went through this actually two days ago. For the women, it was two, three stalls and for the men it was one stall and I believe two urinals. And the capacity, I think, was about 700 gallons versus the larger ones, which is about twice, twice that amount.
Have you seen it at Village Fest? Have you seen the most recent version of this facility?
No, I haven't.
Is Village Fest willing to donate money towards this?
Yes, we are.
You said you had $45,000.
$35,000. We have matching funds.
So we could in theory get the bigger one or we can get two smaller ones. Is it possible to have Village Fest either as an official board or even a subcommittee review this with your staff and get back to David and his staff as to what you recommend?
Right.
Because if we're going through a budget session, it'd be nice to know what we've got as a partnership.
Are we buying, leasing?
Yeah, these are the buy and own.
Right, right.
That's what we budgeted last time, was to own these.
What would the maintenance be on that?
They're roughly about $800 per month, so if you're close to $12,000 a year. But that is figured in in the maintenance cost. They had figured that in their budget.
Thank you.
And then these are available for special events and
Right.
other, other kinds of functions during the year.
Right. It's not solely Village Fest.
Okay, if Village Fest looks at this, council okay with that?
Yeah, then we'll discuss if we feel that two, maybe better, one at each end might be, or one larger towards the middle.
And we have the updates on the costs and we're ready to go. All I need is the number and the type.
Okay.
Good.
And if you're willing to put in, to contribute to that, then we certainly are ready to go because we have the 35, the council appropriated in the current budget, ready to go. Thank you.
Alright.
On your second page of the report, item three, work on solution for vendor parking. You've cited here Desert Fashion Plaza. We are working, if you will, with the developer of that project to see if we can maintain parking for as long as we can. We're not sure when or what will happen to the parking when it does in fact begin construction, but we've got a lot of reasons why we want that parking to remain open. We'll continue to fight to make sure it's open for all practical purposes, even yours. But we don't know exactly what the plan is. Mr. Westman has not revealed to us where he's gonna build or what part of the parking structure he's going to close or at what time. But we'll keep that thought of yours in consideration. On the jewelers, I thought we had talked about actually bringing Jackie back if she was willing to serve. And as much as we've gotten no applications, Madam Clerk, on this category, and you've got nobody serving, maybe we can just forego and see if we can't bring Jackie back for a for immediate
Does she want to?
Yeah, she's willing to come back.
We could bring her back even for next week for action.
Yeah. If she's willing. Or DeeDee Heller. And she buys jewelry for the store too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Either one would be good.
Just an idea. Maybe ask her.
I'll do that. I will.
Okay, anything else? Good. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Leo, what do you got for some public arts?
Well, a couple of things. First off, very happy and very proud to tell you that all four Chihuly's are in place at the airport. This is something that we've been working on for many moons and I'd like to invite you all personally to come and see them if you're good enough friends with Chuck or Barry or somewhat Tom, Anthony.
Or just buy a ticket.
Or buy a ticket and fly somewhere, but it has to be somebody far distant. If you can con your way, well, that's the wrong word, but if you can figure out how to get upstairs, I really invite you to see them. I brought these and I think this is the only way you can see it because I don't think the right equipment is here this evening to punch it in. So if I can hold it up, I can hold, I'll just hold a couple of them up. I'll tell you in a minute, is this the right way to do this?
No, Leo, this way.
Oh, sorry.
Put it in front of your face.
That's an improvement.
There you go.
And I'll just show you a couple of them because it's sort of redundant if I keep showing them.
There's two of them. Explain the two.
They're called, in Chihuli terminology, they're called makias and these are double makias. They represent like flowers. The size of them approximately about 48 inches across.
Yeah.
And they are, they're made of glass. They're from his private collection. A couple of them are actually from the days when Dale Chihuli actually molded and blew the glass himself. And he hasn't done this in, in years and years and years. He released these to us and we reserved them about five years ago. And he has held these for us and allowed us to buy these over a period of time. Together with the Airport Commission and with us and then through our fundraising, we have finally, we committed to them. We paid the first installment. We are now committing to the second payment and then the third payment will be at the final acceptance of them. The first two cases have been retrofitted and lowered a bit, better lighting, better access to them. Fritz Frauscher worked very hard with the Chihuli people to get them refitted and the new cases installed. They are magnificent. Beth Arterberry, who is on the commission, took these pictures very quickly and with just the natural light that was there plus the light on the, on the cases. So this was done. She's a phenomenal photographer and did this on her own time. If you can get up there to see them, they are, they're spectacular. And we're getting a lot of comments from the art world, et cetera. I know we're gonna get some, some really good publicity once we we get word out and we release publicity on this because to have this kind of collection is pretty amazing for this size city and internationally in the world of art to have four double makias of Dale Chihuli. He is, and I think I've mentioned this before, from all we've been able to gather and from Art News, et cetera, the world's most collected living artist, fine artist, and certainly in the world of glass. So it's, it's a big coup for us and we're really happy about it. That's our, also, it makes it much easier, the way they're configured now for cleaning purposes and that's done very carefully. And again, Fritz has been a tremendous help in doing, in doing that for us. The tours? Contact me in five years. Mr. Shield will be glad to discuss that with you. Secondly, the fifth annual Palm Springs Paints and Shoots, which is PSPS, which is our art show, was finished the end of February, actually very beginning of March. We, our attendance was up tremendously. We had huge response to it. That's a completely self-funded show. We are paid a $25 entrance fee for every submission and therefore the awards that we give out is from the fees that we collected. So it does not cost anything except the electricity that we generate to, to pay for turning on the lights at night. We got one heck of a deal in relighting and I, anybody who came to the show, the lighting of it, we finally can see the artwork. Tracy Heller did a phenomenal job in scouring the world and coming up with a terrific price in lighting all of City Hall, up and down the entire length of the, of the building. So that was a big success and we were very happy with it. Again, we've gotten letters and lots of kudos on, on that. The third is the dog park area. If you have been out there, we're very pleased with that. Phil Evans gave us a tremendous price for extending the small dog area. That is done. The small dog owners are thrilled with it because there's chairs out there now. It's three times as big as it was and they don't feel like second-class citizens. So you don't need a pass to go out there and see that, so you can, if you can get past the sentries, go see that. The Sunny Bono bus has been moved slightly. It's, a new pedestal has been installed. It's, it looks very professionally done and it's been completely relit. So you, you do notice it now. A plaque is being installed on the base. It's as you go up to the Sunny Bono Terminal, it's on the right-hand side recessed at the bottom of the escalator.
Point of clarification, Sunny Bono concourse.
That's what I meant to say. The Sunny Bono Silo on the right-hand side.
Bravo, bravo. I'll accept that, sir.
Thank you so much. I'm in trouble. The Joshua Tree murals, they're, they are currently in somewhat the wrong place. One original is upstairs. The other one is downstairs. They both belong at the, in the upper terminal. They belong in both sides of the Alaska Terminal. We had giclets and giclets are a believe me, I didn't know until I got on the Arts Commission what a giclet is, but it's a copy of of an original work of art. And we've had giclets made, which are smaller versions, which will be placed across from the ticket counters near American and United Airlines. And those will be on the walls, which with explanations directing you upstairs to see the originals, which are on both sides of Alaska Airlines. So that'll be the final home of these two very beautiful murals, which are done with hundreds upon hundreds of Polaroid photographs, which are then of Joshua Tree and the Coachella Valley, which are then cut into pieces and reformed into Joshua Tree and the Coachella Valley and then painted. And it, it's quite a magnificent thing. The, the artist, who is Jay Schlossberg Cohen, no relation, is very famous in the art world. He lives in Baltimore. He's, he has a piece of art hanging at the White House, plus other things throughout the country, is the artist. And it's, they're quite wonderful. It's in two, it's a diptych, it's in two pieces and the giclets, as I say, will be downstairs. We've had some good comments on those. I'm sure some of you were at the dedication last about a year ago.
Yes, sir.
The Chairman of the Links is a piece that is on loan. It's a new bronze by Jeffrey Fowler and it's on the pad outside the Wellwood-Murray Library. The retail of that, of that piece is $62,500. It, we have it on loan for a period of one year. It represents, it's called The Chairman of the Links and it represents a 1920s or 30s gentleman golfer. It's right near the recessed area that goes back to the Lippert's Ice Cream near the, near the theater. And it's a really good-looking piece. It really is. It's six feet and a three-quarter inch high, or six feet three, actually. So notice it as you go by. Again, we've had comments on that. It's a good-looking piece. City signage, we had come up with a design after a long time, about two and a half years of work on that, and then we were told that the city has purchased, oh, I hate to call it a gas station, but the new visitor's center. And we think it's, it's only right that the city signage and the And we think it's only right that the city signage and especially that one tie in with and relate to the new visitor's center. So we have essentially, John Raymond, at our last meeting, we would like to explore the possibility that the design team coordinate our entrance sign there and throughout the city with the new design for the visitor's center. And also include the pathway signs directing people to the museum, to the airport, to the City Hall and so on and so forth. The design that we came up with for the city signage will fit very beautifully and echoes the feeling, and I think members of council have seen it, of the feeling of the, and the sense of the fifty's modern that we had, that we all like. And it also feels a lot like the designs that you see around the airport, the designs that are along Ramon and Jean Autry. That is not what actually influenced us in picking this design, we just darn liked it. It also incorporates the feeling of the mountains and also the photo opportunities that exist at the current sign that is there because it is probably one of the most famous photo ops in all of the Coachella Valley. It has been for years and we want to keep it that way. We just want to tie the whole thing together and so we're sort of stepping back to see if the design teams can work together and make this whole thing coagulate and happen. And lastly, we want to concentrate in this next period of time on establishing a maintenance process to make sure that the pieces that we have out there, such as the Koya Women, the various pieces around town, are properly maintained, the Highlands mural project and so on, are properly taken care of and properly cleaned and look sparkling and so that we can proudly talk about the fact that they don't look like rejects. So that's essentially it. And again, do your best to see these Chihuly's. Not by force, but if you can get up there, I really recommend it. Maybe Chuck takes bribes or something. Although I saw, when we went to the Sunny Bono Concourse dedication, they made him take his shoes off to go through the checkpoint.
Oh, they didn't, I just like walking around.
Oh, is that what it is?
Very good. Questions for Leo and the Public Arts Commission? Leo, Palm Springs Street Sculpture Bench Project. I had the occasion this week of walking to downtown with merchants from the downtown expressing concerns about a myriad of issues and concerns, many of which were brought to our attention at a recent study session in dealing with the Westman Project and otherwise. So I kind of walked a four-block stretch this week and we came upon the bench project. And in dealing with maintenance and cleanup and otherwise, the dilemma that was brought to my attention was, how are these to be maintained? They've already got scuff marks and skateboarders and bike marks and scuffs. And it's not like we just paint it, as we do generically everything with terracotta paint every quarter and walk away from it. This requires an artist to come back and upgrade and freshen their respective work. How does that program work from the Public Arts Commission?
It's not really our program.
Not your program?
No. It's a program that was presented to us and was a concern that we had from the very beginning.
The maintenance issue and the upgrade?
Very definitely. And we don't have a real hand on it. It's something that we were very concerned about and we questioned it. In fact, we talked with Bruce about it at the very outset and we said that, and they were concerned about it also. We asked the people in charge if we could do something about it by putting it out there and seeing how it looked in a month before we went further. And they've sort of put the project, we've okayed the project in concept, but we asked them to come back to us and let us know, along with Parks and Rec, how are they going to maintain it, what are they going to do? They've put it on the back burner. I don't know that they've gotten enough sponsors and enough funding and enough interest to go forward with it, I don't know. I know they want to, they said they would come back to us, I think, next season and I don't know what else they're going to do. We want them to be successful with it. We want them to succeed, but they've got a lot to do.
Yeah. Jeannie?
The project was supposed to be over in April, so it would seem to me that...
It's time.
...paint them terracotta. But it doesn't look like we take that great a care of the ones we have.
Well...
It just happens I ran into Susan Cohen about a month ago at Desert Rant.
Yeah, one of it's hers.
And one of them is hers and they're going to be removing those at the end of April, is my understanding. There are three of them, I believe you're right, Leo, I think it was a question about some sponsorships and some timing. And so it's under her understanding that she's, you know, they put it on the back burner for this year and will do it again next year. And I instructed her that that may not necessarily be so, that, you know, it was approved for a specific period of time and to write Mr. Reddy a letter requesting if they want to do that same program next year that we need to revisit with it. Probably now and not use that word assume, that it's okay to just use that same project and just bump the years on the approval process. So that was probably about three weeks ago. So I suggested that she write you a letter.
Maybe the two of you in respective Commissions can get some input as to how this project went.
It was Scott's and my understanding, Michael's understanding, that upon notification, I believe Susan might have been the contact or...
Jane?
Yeah. Would, once notified that there was a problem, that they would be out there with a matter of two or three days doing any retro painting or correction on the paintings. So if there are some benches, there's only three, if there's one of the benches or three benches needs some maintenance, then we need to bring that to their attention and they will address it immediately. But as Jeannie was saying, that the program is done the end of April and she had indicated they are going to remove them, or at least remove one of them and then probably just paint over the other one. So I think what I can do is talk to staff, Scott, maybe they can, you can give them a call here in the next couple of weeks and dial that in with Susan and make sure it takes place in accordance with our agreement with them.
We actually approved eight more designs. They came to us and we okayed eight more designs. So I mean, we were, we, and once the thing was approved, we encouraged them to go forward. We sat there and went through a whole bunch more and said yes, 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 and yes. And then that's, we never heard from them again.
Okay. Troy, what do we got on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can provide the council and the board and commissioners with an update. Actually, Mr. Cohen today called and is planning to purchase the bench. He actually wrote a check out for the amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the city today and is going to be removing the bench closest to Thai Kitchen tomorrow. He's actually going to take possession of it and keep it at his home. As for the other one that's near the Chop House, we have spoken with the Desert Fine Arts Academy and they're planning to restore the bench to its original condition. So the two pilot benches that were done as part of the pilot program, one's going to be purchased and removed, the other one will be restored, and then we'll wait until later this year to see if they want to continue with the program.
Will the one by the Thai Kitchen be replaced?
Yes, Mr. Michael is already aware that it's going to be leaving us tomorrow and I believe his staff will be putting a bench out in the near future.
Okay, and there were only two, there weren't three?
There were only two, I didn't think there was a third one.
Good, good. On the issue of maintenance, I met a gentleman this week who had a concern about the JFK bust out in the Medians Strip. Water stains on the stone and so on and so forth, is that part of your maintenance program, is that inside your? Okay. If we can get that sort of moved into the list of things to obviously upgrade. He was going to try to put together a private effort and I thought that, I didn't know, but I was in the assumption that the maintenance is part of what Public Arts Commission does.
We actually have a sub on that and they've made one foray and they've done nine different projects and they, I have a report on it. And then they're doing another one, the next swing around, and then we're going to prioritize it and then go out. The last time they did it, they actually went out with toothbrushes and cleaned the Koya Women. So I mean, it's a project.
Yeah.
It really is. What was that, sir? Nothing? Hello, Mr.?
Very good. Other questions for Public Arts? Very good, let's go to planning then. Phil, how are you, sir?
Just fine, thank you. Councilman, Commissioner, staff. Planning Department has filed or given you all an extensive report, it's got twenty-five pages in it, I'm not going to go through it, but you can look at it in detail as much as you like. Just to comment briefly with some information that is surprising to many people and from what staff tells me, people that are involved in developing the city are surprised as well. And that's the amount of activity that the Planning Department sees or has seen in recent months. And just to give you an idea, projects that are in the pipeline, are proposed projects that are being considered seriously in the planning process, we've got thirty-nine-hundred proposed residential units. A lot of units, a lot of units. And that includes Century Home, three-hundred-and-eight, that's in progress right now, the Burnett Companies, four-hundred-and-twelve, the Palm Canyon LLC at two-sixty-one and the Palm Springs Classic, which is revised and from what I understand, moving forward at a thousand ninety-nine. A lot of units, a lot of activity. And commercially and in terms of hotel and resort projects, we have between twenty-six and twenty-nine-hundred-and-fifty units. A lot of units, a lot of activity, a lot of people interested in the city and moving forward and spending money and planning and with great expectations for the city and the Commission and staff, I know, share their anticipation. Planning permit activity, last year it was fourteen-hundred-and-twenty-five total permits, the year before it was twelve-hundred-and-forty-nine, so about a fifteen percent increase. And that level of increase has been pretty steady going back for the last five or six years, constantly growing in terms of activity. If you wanted some comments about fundings, might as well just do that now if that pleases you. I know that one major project for planning is the general plan update. You have a substantial allocation in this year's budget. I believe that Mr. Evans has sought to supplement that in the upcoming year, if that will fit in. We are getting a fairly slow start this year, this fiscal year. I anticipated that we would have been further along, but we are moving forward. We reported back to you the public input and how we plan to structure that. Different representatives of different public groups are being contacted now so that a hearing setup schedule can be planned so that we'll have public comments, which is really an important part of the public plan, public input in the general plan amendment. Perhaps the most serious budget issue has to do with staffing. I know you've got a hiring freeze, just in the last couple of weeks, we've lost an assistant planner, someone that was involved with signage and permitting, someone that's going to be hard to fill, a position that's going to be hard to fill and hard to, how can I say, spread out those tasks among the staff that exist. With all this increase and our efforts towards improving our service to the public, if we're cut back in staff, we won't be able to serve the public. There will be a decrease in service and that's something that you'll have to consider as you evaluate the budget, as to whether the members of planning staff fall under your freeze or whether exceptions are to be made or how to integrate that. But that is a serious concern. One of the other reports talked about vacancies on the Commission, we're full, but there will be two vacancies. John Caffrey and I are completing our sixth year, so there'll be at least two positions open. We've had members of the public attend our meetings and come up either before or after and told us that they're there to evaluate the activities and that they're applying to be Commissioners in the upcoming year. And I think we have a pretty good Commission, I'm sure that we will continue to. Want to just share some comments that were made by the public following what has been really one of the most controversial issues, the Vista Sunrise Project. Two different camps. One person came up to me after the meeting, right the day of our meeting, who was involved with the, a proponent of the entire project, but somebody that's familiar with planning issues and has been before us before, and just came up and to say thank you for, to the Commission for the way the hearing was conducted and the ability to convey their message and had listened to all of the public comment and was very pleased with the way the deliberation took place and understood why we reached our conclusion and said that he couldn't really fault us on our conclusion even though he had been an advocate for the entire project and we had cut out part of it. Couple of weeks later, somebody stopped me on the street to comment about the hearing and he had been a local homeowner nearby who was against the entire project. So he also was disappointed a little bit in the outcome of our meeting because we had approved most of the project even though we took out part of it. This individual said that he had never been to this type of meeting before, really didn't think much of the city governmental process, but felt that he compelled it to come because he felt so strongly about it. Didn't intend to speak. After hearing all of the speakers on both sides, he, towards the end of it, got up and spoke and spoke pretty passionately. But he was surprised at the participation of the public. He was very surprised at the thoughtfulness of the Commissioners and how they listened carefully, they were courteous to people, they discussed the pros and cons, had a willingness to be persuaded. And he also felt that this was a good process. Even though the outcome was not what he had wanted, he felt that the process is good and that made me feel good about the way our Commission functions and I think the way most of the Commissions function. And as you look for replacement Commissioners and comments, I've told some of the people that came up wanting to know about being Commissioners, is that you have to listen, you have to be willing to convey your thoughts, not in a dogmatic fashion, so that you can hear your other Commissioners' comments and be persuaded. And they're also surprised at the extent of the work. And I know this applies to most of the other Commissions as well. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of reading to do and there's a lot of time commitment, but it's a pretty gratifying process. I've appreciated it. Is there any other questions?
Questions, Council? On the issue of hiring freeze, it is equal across the board. Now we're frozen at all positions. Mr. Reddy, any comments on that? That's it. We haven't provided any opportunities for any new employees or any feeling of any vacancies until we can get our arms around this unusually large deficit. And just so you understand, we're looking at four-point-two now, the numbers are fluid. Tom Canar is working on a daily basis with senior staff, trying to find out what the actual numbers will be as we draw close. But none of the numbers we're analyzing now include the impacts from the state. So it's kind of like a second shoe is going to drop sometime in the future. We don't have any clear idea what the state's going to do because the state doesn't know what they're doing. We do not expect the state's budget to be passed in June, July. I think they have a mandate sometime in the fall, October, September. I would hope that they meet that, if not, we'll be waiting until then. It's a bit of a foggy area right now for us. We have some internal things we're trying to deal with, but the external ones are not formalized yet. So until we can figure out what everything is, the impacts, we are unable to do anything more than just kind of hold on and brace. We have given, I'm sure many of you know this, pink slips, layoff notices to staff. There's a time chronology that requires them to get advanced notice. They don't let go of the same day, there's a time period and then there's, after they leave, there's some following, some benefits that follow beyond that. So we're trying to get that work done if you can within this budget year so it doesn't impact, say, next year any worse than it's already at. Mr. Reddy, other additional comments?
Mr. Mayor, we just note that the individual from that department, we did not target that position to lay off, unfortunately that person left of her own accord for personal reasons. So unfortunately, we weren't looking to lay off in that department because we do realize the service that department provides. Unfortunately, it just happened to fall that way.
Yeah. There are good days and there are bad days and there are good years and there are bad years. This is shaping out to be a challenging year for all of us, both at the Council level and the staff level. So part of the intent of this cabinet meeting is to make you aware of at least some of that aspects. It's real, it's going to be hard, it's going to be harsh and we're doing everything we can to soften the blow, but there will be a blow. And we're trying to figure out just what it is we can manipulate and massage, but four-point-two million dollars turns out to be pretty real.
Absolutely.
And that's first phase. Yes, sir.
I did want to mention, there are some plans on the wall behind Mr. Reddy there that people may want to look at during the break, just current projects that are underway or working through the planning stage and it's our contribution to public art of the Commission. The largest one on top, you know, I'm not sure, I believe that's the project at the end of Sunrise, that would be the one on...
Burnett project, yeah, around the golf course.
And that's the... And that's the, that would be the eastern half. That's on the east side of Sunrise. There is another project--
Very nice collage.
Yeah, exactly.
And this is Alejo and Indian?
No. Oh, the one, no.
Phil, is there any way that they could, someone can identify what they are? Because you're just looking at them--
No, I'll defer, I'll defer that to Mr. Evans, if he wants to comment and walk us through that.
Maybe we'll bring Doug up, he can do a little bit of a--
If not, they are identified on there.
I will take the opportunity, as Doug comes up, to remind you, Phil, I believe you had a comment about the second Tuesday of the month conflicting with Desert Highland.
Right. And if you want me to mention it now, that's further down on the agenda, but I will mention it. That is, the second Tuesday of the month is Desert Highlands Community Meeting.
Yes, sir.
And I know you talked about changing the council cabinet meeting to Tuesdays rather than Wednesdays. I know Mr. Evans normally attends that meeting quite often, the police chief, sometimes Mr. Raymond, people that like to attend this meeting have commitments, if they can keep them, to the Desert Highlands Community, and that's an important part of community relations. So if that date can be massaged, or if you can keep it on Wednesday, or if it has to be a Tuesday, maybe instead of the second Tuesday, it could be the third or first, might work out better.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Evans, give us a little idea what those pictures are on the wall, sir.
Well, very quickly, I'm going to start from this side, because if I work on the other side, I want to hit that speaker, and I'm going to give you a lot of feedback. This is the shopping center at Sunrise and Ramon Road. It's currently under construction. This building is substantially out of the ground, and you can see a new Ralph's Market. This project is located on Bellardo Road--
Canyon?
And Sunny Dunes, right by the Takwitz Wash. It's under construction, single-family residential project. Houses, we hope, will start about five hundred thousand dollars, and with luck, they might start at seven hundred. The market's been pushing houses up, and--
At the end of Bellardo.
It's under construction. This is being done by Mark Temple Construction and a group of partners. Mark Temple's company did Mesquite Country Club, Palm Springs Villas. They've probably done almost two thousand units in the desert. They left Palm Springs for a while, they're back. They're doing the project at Alejo and North Indian also. This project is located on East Palm Canyon Drive and Araby, Creative Communities Project. It's a single-family, Pantura, yep. It's a single-family and attached product. They also think they'll start about that same price range. So they're very bullish on the market, and they're well under construction.
That's the southwest corner, so you know, because there's--
Southwest. The other side of the street, we have a one hundred and four unit apartment complex under construction. That whole street is finishing off.
Right by Palapas.
Right by Palapas. Both of these projects are probably going to generate more investment in that neighborhood. The backside of Palapas has a large vacant piece of property that likely will be sold here shortly and go into housing production. This is a very small project, but I think very significant. It's on North Indian Canyon at San Carlos. It's a four-unit project, really in an area that hasn't seen a lot of activity, and all of a sudden, we're going to get other projects in this area. This is south of San Rafael. So it's a very small project--
It's just due north of the Racket Club. Yeah. Quite a ways up.
Real sharp-looking project and is underway. This is the Burnett project. It's a little over three hundred units. There's another phase to it. It's going to be an active adults complex.
End of Sunrise, north, till it stops on the right side. Opposite Coyote Run.
North of San Rafael, across from Coyote Run in that area. Really, it's started a whole new interest, in what I call is the middle section of our town, no longer the north, and that's north of I-ten. The middle section of our town, we're going to have a lot of activity. Century Homes is starting construction on over, about three hundred and eight units, probably within the month.
In the DH, up there by, up there by the Highlands Center.
Yes, sir. And this is the Takwitz Properties Project, behind La Valerese. Gentlemen, Palm Springs Modern Homes, who's been very successful with single-family product as well as condominium product. He purchased that property with an investor, and they're going to do that project. And it's an urban infill project at housing units right in the immediate downtown. It's around behind La Valerese.
Normal La Valerese.
Is that Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
La Valerese is located here, The Willows is located here. This is a site that's kind of tucked back in there, and if you haven't looked at it--
End of Takwitz.
Very west end of Takwitz.
Oh, down there.
Yeah, where Takwitz kind of tapers into a one-lane road, kind of going back up into Palisades. Yeah.
And they're currently reworking some of the architecture to really improve it and working on the site plans. Those are just some very quick glimpses of what's going on. Almost every planning commission has projects like this or similar to it, very active. Those will probably start five hundred thousand up, and if they're well received in the marketplace, they should hit quite a bit higher than that. Everybody will start, when they deal with us, at a lower value. No developer wants to get left with standing product. They'd rather sell them at a low rate, sell them all fast. And what we found in Palm Springs right now, they start there, and they realize real quickly, the first few units they sold, somebody else is going to get a hundred to two hundred thousand dollar instant turnaround profit, because they pop them right on the resale market, even before the project's finished. That completes a quick overview of the planning commission's art project.
Doug, just one question, while you're up, Doug. Could you give us kind of an update on what's going on at Murray Canyon and Palm Canyon with the Indian project there?
Well, the, there's two projects, actually, three projects that the planning commission has been working on. The council and the commission approved the golf course. That was hung up with Riverside County Flood Control and our community players, the Sierra Club, and they caused a substantial redesign of the golf course, and it's going to delay it one year at a pretty substantial cost. The clubhouse for the golf course was recently approved by the planning commission. It's a, they're going to tear down the existing clubhouse and rebuild a new one. And then the hotel has just started through the conceptual review process. It's just over three hundred and fifty units. It's a high-rise building, ranging from about sixty to eighty-eight feet, with a piece of it at ninety. We've started the design review process, and by the way, it was reviewed very favorably. It is a very strong piece of architecture. It is, it is, they're not trying to hide it.
Same location?
Same location as existing Canyon Hotel and expanded site. They're going to go, push to the south and move the levee.
Murray and--
Murray and South Palm Canyon Drive. And, you know, we're just starting the review process, and we have a fairly extensive environmental review process on redoing the specific plan.
Doug, it's six stories, but in height, it's taller. Is that right?
It's taller, yes.
So there's six floors, and then they have sort of a high-flying trellis piece, I guess, I don't know what to call that, on top.
It's a trellis piece on top.
It's a trellis piece on top.
It's a very sophisticated architectural--
Unlike a silo, it's a trellis piece on top. But it's eighty-eight feet, which is roughly almost a nine-story building.
Yeah, the first couple of floors have a lot of volume in them, so as you do that, you try to create the volume in your first few floors, which have commercial activities, you push that up, and they're also raising the site up a little bit. So the hotel rooms are looking over the levee, as opposed to the lower rooms looking into the levee. Very creative site plan, and the Aqua Caliente Development Authority is the applicant on that, and they are looking to get the conceptual approval of that form of hotel, not the details of it. Then they'll go out and market the property and hopefully bring a hotel developer back and refine the plans.
They don't have, they don't have anyone on the string yet? Or they have some--
No. In the deal, the way you work a hotel deal is you bring them a permit, an entitlement. They evaluate the entitlement, then they decide if they want to be at your site. Hotel chains right now can pick and choose where they invest their money, and it's a tough market right now. So it's going to have to be a location-driven project, and it's a superior location. It has a good track record when the hotel was open, right up to the day they closed it.
Are they going to utilize that pit or backfill that for the old conventions?
That actually would be the site of a parking structure. So it'd be primary--
So they would probably go subterranean that?
No, they're going to fill the pit in, they're going to do one level, one level at grade, one above, so it's a two-level parking structure, fairly low profile. But going below grade is tough.
The hall's already there.
Unfortunately, not quite big enough.
Is Hillside still part of the project? I mean, at one time, they were--
There's a component that would go on the west side of South Palm Canyon Drive, and that's one of the areas that has some controversy.
Is that golf up there?
No, just residential at this point.
Residential piece, yeah. So the project could go without the housing, they're trying to bring it in, but it's--
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting. Well, as you can see, there's a lot of building going on, a lot of residential development going on in Palm Springs. Fair amount of commercial, and now we're looking at some hotel properties again. And we did open up the Extended Stay on Takwitz, which was probably the first hotel built in Palm Springs in fifteen years. Twelve, fifteen years, so a long time. Long time. So things are, things are changing. Other areas still lag behind us, as you can well imagine, but a lot of things are moving. Kind of keep moving more. Okay? Plan, anything else?
Nope.
Good. Parks and Rec, Bruce?
Hi. Put some great ideas for a tour next year, huh? What a great idea. Well, except that I'm bummed about KU losing last night, we'll go on. Parks and Recreation Commission, you guys all have a three or four-page handout we have on air. It doesn't tell us everything that we've done, but probably the biggest thing that's on the burner is the skate park and the pool renovation. That I know council's working diligently, and so is staff on both sides, whether it be David Ready's office or on Scott's office. And we were obviously somewhat disappointed by the two bids that we received here last month that put us over budget. We've had to reevaluate, staff's reevaluated the process, and we're actually going to rebid the pool renovation and feel that by pulling out one of the components, or changing one of the components on the heating situation, and having a bid specifically to specialized contractors rather than a GC, a general contractor, that we're hoping we can get the prices down that we can live with. We're actually going to, actually looked very hard, and I believe Scott said they were in the throes of getting approved. We're going to move the skate park would be east, a distance, and I don't know what that is, if that's thirty or thirty feet, I believe it is, and therefore, we won't infringe on the existing restrooms and lockers and leave those as-is, again, due to budget constraints. So we can move forward with the skate park, which I'm sure a lot of people out there watching tonight, and have been reading the paper, are very happy about. We do need, do know from a staff level that, and I think also council, that we've, you know, we've got to find a way in the next year or two to find some funding to do something with the restrooms. They are, some of them are not in compliance with ADA. We, there, we've looked at the, before we even went through the pool renovation, the skate park, we looked at renovating the restrooms in there, and that was going to be away, cost prohibitive. So we don't really want to dump any money in there and try to clean those things up. We just need to find the funds here in the next couple of years to move forward with, if you want to call it, phase two or phase three of actually building the new restrooms as we have planned and demoing the existing restrooms. But that being said, I'm excited about the fact that we're going to still be able to get the skate park done and get the pool renovation. We know we've had for, God, I think from the time I started on the commission about four or five years ago, we had the money allocated for the filter renovation. So I'm sure that's earned a couple hundred thousand in interest. We probably got plenty of money, Scott.
Yeah.
No, huh?
It wasn't that easy.
So that being said, I'll entertain any questions that we may have. Parks.
Yeah, what interest rate are you getting right now that you think you're going to make any money? Because Tom's got a pen and paper, he wants to know what company you're using. All right. Any questions on Parks and Rec?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Bruce made the statement that the current locker rooms are not compliant with ADA. I just, I want to make a correction. They are compliant with ADA at the time they were built.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So it's just they don't meet the current standard. I'm not saying they don't need the work done, but I just want to straighten that issue out, that they are compliant with the requirement of the building code.
Thank you, you're correct, yes.
Point well made. Point well made. Other comments, questions?
Well, I hope that was short enough for you.
Yeah. I'm good to go on it.
Five minutes, five minutes.
Great. Genius says, good to go. For Bruce, that's pretty good.
Yeah, it's very good.
Bruce, let's go to library, sir. Welcome.
Unfortunately, I think I'll be a little longer.
Time's up.
Time's up. The Frank Bogart Sales, book sales, I think this is interesting to all of us. On March ninth, we had a book signing at the Friends Annual Meeting, and it was great success. Attendance with about four hundred people, very good press coverage, and about fifteen hundred copies have already been sold.
Outstanding. Job well done.
Very well.
It was a great event.
Yep, it was great, wasn't it?
Yeah.
We have a new circulation system at the library. It's called the Serces Unicorn Circulation System. It's being installed. We've been able to meet the timetable. In fact, it's functioning right now officially. However, the official grand opening with cake will be April twenty-first, and we invite you all to come.
What time is it?
It'll be at 2:00 PM at the library. You see the new circulation system. There'll be an open house, houses on Wednesday, April twenty-third, and Friday, April twenty-fifth, with twenty-minute classes for anyone who wishes to learn how to best use the ibistro catalog. So you'll have a learning session there, staff will teach you how to use it. And of course, at the official grand opening, you'll have a clue as to what's going on then. The Great Gatsby, we had, as you know, a very good success with the Grapes of Wrath program. We had, the film was shown at the Camelot, had an excellent turnout. And as a result of that, we are continuing on with the project of books. And now we've turned ourselves to The Great Gatsby. And it's a book which everyone says, or almost everyone says, is one of the ten top books in the, of the twentieth century. There is a book discussion group, we have a book club at the library, we have about twenty-some individuals that come once a month to discuss the book that's selected for the month, and this past month, it's been The Great Gatsby. At Friday on, about, let's see, I want to see this, let's see, is this Friday? Yeah, about, yeah, that's right, it's this Friday. Starting at 6:30, there'll be a speakeasy party at the Camelot Theater, followed by, that means we want you to come in costume, okay? Followed by, at seven o'clock, at a showing of the nineteen seventy-four film of The Great Gatsby starring Robert Redford and Mia Farrell, and it's free admission. So it's, you can't lose on this. There'll be a little wine and cheese beforehand. Okay, not such good news. We have some revenue losses to the library. After the passage of Proposition thirteen in nineteen eighty-seven, the state library developed two subventions to protect libraries from the deep cuts made by their own jurisdiction because of their loss of property taxes. One of these subventions, which is under a very complex formula, our library had seventy-two thousand dollars. And with every year, we receive less and less money. It worsens. The payment up to this time has been cut nearly in half. The second subvention is based upon another complex formula, having to do with the number of books circulated to non-residents, called transaction-based reimbursement, and is threatened with elimination. Together, the loss of these two programs represents a loss of nearly a hundred thousand dollars revenue to the library. So that's bad news. Some good news. We have what we call Read Across America Day, which was on March third. Libraries and schools all over the country participated, and this is the part that's particularly interesting. Using our video conferencing capabilities, mothers and kids from our Families for Literacy Program were connected with Judd Elementary School in North Brunswick, New Jersey. The children in New Jersey read some books to our kids, including one of them, which was translating in Spanish. Mind you, you see the kids on the screen, and they see our kids here in Palm Springs. Four of our mothers, who are just learning to read in English, read books to them with great success. So we're really happy with that project. This year, we have an annual teddy bear team, was a happy occasion, with a hundred and three teddy bears, and well over two hundred people attending. That's fun. We have, together with the Historical Society's collection, the library's local history archives, of course, are invaluable. They're also enormous. Access to them has been very limited, and that's because everything is in files. You just have file folders. We now have an archivist who is a specialist in digital, digitizing our records. And in this digitization, it not only preserves it forever, in quotes, but it eliminates those files, and you can access them by computer. files and you can access them by computer, so that's really a wonderful thing to do, so it's digitizing all the relevant materials. Eventually, the digitized version will be available to our customers through the library catalog, through this new circulation system, you're going to be able to access things like Amazon, like you can see on amazon.com screens from your home, that's what this is going to mean to the community members, so this is going to be fabulous. We have something that needs to be brought to your attention about the new United States Patriot Act. Under this act, it means that the library users' files are open to any law enforcement officials without a warrant. From the library point of view, and also the American Library Association, this is an erosion of First Amendment rights. So this is, this is not, you can come in, you show a badge, you show some identification, you do not need a warrant, and they can access the file. I read in the paper this morning, or yesterday, maybe some of you saw it too, this was an extreme measure in the part of a library in California, what they're doing is at the end of each day, they're shredding all the records. So what's going to happen about that, I don't know, but that's the, something to be aware of, at least. Now I'm going to discuss something I know must be very controversial to the council, but I want to give a background to everyone. We are going to lose our city librarian, Margaret Rhodes, she's resigning after a number of years of wonderful service to our community. We started recruitment process for this position probably two, three months ago, at least. We had no idea that there'd be anything about staff, particularly, for those of you who don't know this, the library position is a charter position, it's in the charter, it's not, from what we can understand from a legal point of view, it's not subject to reduction. It is something just like the police chief or the fire chief, it's a chartered position, and it's so mentioned in the city charter. We, as I said, we proceeded on this in good faith, two, three months ago, we hired a professional recruitment firm who does library searches. We have already expended out of our trust fund more than $20,000. If this goes down the tubes, the trust fund will be out that amount of money, and we will not have a city librarian. We had 47 applicants that have come in, out of the initial screening, it got down to 27. At this particular time, we have scheduled this coming Thursday at 8 o'clock in the morning till 11:30 in the morning, to meet with the consultants to get it further down than the 27. We're in the process, we have to continue with this, and I must say again, that we need, from a legal point of view, this is a charter position, we need a professional city librarian, we recruited nationwide, to lose this pool and to the people who in good faith have applied for the position and so forth, would be, I think, very unprofessional, to say the least, so that's my report.
Thank you. Council, questions? PLF and CLSA, loss of funding, the erosion's been going on for a long time, numbers have diminished every year and so on and so forth, worst we've seen. Margaret, maybe you can come up, this is kind of a technical question. Explain these two funding sources and what they mean and why they are there, so that everyone understands what it is.
The two funding sources have come out of, as Richard said, the loss of money to libraries after Proposition 13 was passed. Public Library Foundation is a subvention based on population, which requires a maintenance of effort on the part of the jurisdiction that runs the library, so it is written so that if we fall below the previous year's budget, then we lose the state's subvention. Several years ago, it was funded for the, for our library, at about $72,000, this year it has already been cut, and it was $38,000 this year. The CLSA money is called a transaction-based reimbursement, TBR, and that is based on the very complex formula, but on the population and the numbers of books that we circulate to people who are not residents of the city.
Might mean about having to charge.
Yes. The governor has proposed to eliminate the entire subvention of $12.1 million, so that will affect every library, and he is suggesting that we charge $5 for every interlibrary loan that we do.
Charge who and collects for who?
Charge the customer.
And who gets the $5?
The library. I mean, the Board of Trustees may or may not adopt this, but this is the governor's suggestion.
Governor's model, yes.
$5 for each interlibrary loan, and $1 for every book that is circulated to a non-resident. Many people can absorb that loss, but the children and the older people who come to the library cannot. We have many classes from the Palm Springs Unified School District, half of the class is made up of kids who live in Palm Springs, and half, half is made up of kids who live elsewhere. Those kids could be charged a dollar if the trustees choose to do what...
Like Cathedral City, for example, is not a part of it, or Desert Springs, we're all going to the same school.
So, so combined, not counting anything that the trustees might do to charge and make up that deficit, we would lose close to $100,000 a year.
California Library Service Act and PLF was sort of an enticement to keep libraries in sort of a system whereby we loan each other our resources, our materials, and then there'd be a balance at the end of the month, end of the quarter, end of the year, that would say, okay, you had 1,500 pieces of my stuff, and I had 12 of yours, and you sort of made a compensation, book for book kind of thing, there was some sort of a formula very complex, but the incentive was that you'd have everybody's resources available to everybody, and then this funding source from Sacramento would sort of offset, because some libraries have all the books and we've got a dwindling supply, you've got nothing in a certain collection, and Margaret houses the best in the valley, so it'd all kind of benefit from it. Certain libraries do not participate, correct?
A few.
In State of California, a few. They chose to say, look, don't come to our library, we won't come to yours, we don't want the money.
Yeah.
Now that there is no money, unless you charge, there is no money.
That's right.
The system has collapsed in some respects. I won't say it's failed, it just hasn't been funded, so it's not working.
Well, that's right, the governor has also proposed to drop the Library of California, which is supposed to supplant CLSA, so, yeah, the whole, the whole concept of free library service over this past 100 years is being dumped essentially, unless, unless we do something about it.
Can you speak to the imbalance of our library to other library and other library users outside? Because it's not all citizens of Palm Springs that go there, other citizens come here, and yet our citizens aren't going to their respective libraries, there's an imbalance.
We are still a net lender, which means that we still lend up to 1,000 more items than any other library that uses us.
And in years gone by, you were compensated somewhat.
Yes.
50 cents on the dollar, 70, 40, whatever it was, and now it's dwindling to nothing on a dollar.
Yes.
And I only bring it to the council's attention because in years gone by, it was bad, now that the money is gone, and library funds are shriveling, and cities are struggling, when we fund our library to a certain level and others don't, you're now bearing the responsibility, the cost, the wear and tear on your carpet, on your books, on your everything, for other cities. And the system was in place years ago, so that everyone had an equal chance, but the system's falling, and as citizens find that their library services collapse or reduce, the collections aren't as good, they don't enhance their publications, and whatever aspects you want to look at, they say, well, don't worry about going to our library, we'll just go to Palm Springs. And then you start to wear down, you know, our place. And a library judges its success by the, by the feet that come to the door, as they say, huh? And your success is also sort of your burden, because as they come in, it's a free service, the more people come in, wear your carpet down, wear everything down, including your books, and you're forced, because you're successful, to replace them faster. If other cities are collapsing, that accelerates the deterioration of our collection. So I just want to get a little clearer understanding, and I appreciate you coming up, Margaret, and Richard, thank you from the board's standpoint, that the system's not working as well, and I want the council at least be aware of it in the budget session. We were reluctant to pull out of these two funding sources in certain years for a number of reasons, one of which, I think, on the federal side, we have a certain collection that affords us access for certain documents and so on and so forth.
Government documents, right.
And if we were to close the door because of that funding source, we could have lost that federal component. Can you talk a little bit about what that would mean?
Well, the federal component is a use of the government, federal government depository, which is an enormous resource. Over the years, we have come to depend on it more and more, and it is free. To have to drop it would be a very unfortunate circumstance, so we, we're being bombarded here on all sides at the moment, and it's very uncomfortable.
Your digitized archive accessible for free? Copies off the internet for free?
Not yet, but it will be. It will include the index to the Desert Sun that we do, and it will also include the many, many, many paper files that we have eventually.
Okay. Well, again, I appreciate the little update and the little expanding of the presentation, and your charter position is duly noted.
Thank you, sir.
Council, the questions? Margaret, congratulations on your success, you're wearing down our library, thank you. And that's kind of the job, you know, it's what you look for. Okay, anything else, sir? Council, anything else on library? Very good, human rights?
Thank you. Human Rights Commission has nothing but good news. Yeah, and we'll try to do the good news quickly. We're continuing to do our monthly forums, educational forums, while all the commissioners are working with individuals, you know, in the city, on whatever needs they may have, and we do an excellent program with mediation, one-on-one with people, and that Commissioner Jim Janis does a great job on mediation. I just want to run over quickly the forums that we've done. The day after our last council cabinet meeting, we did a forum concerning whether the Palm Springs Police Department should be part of the INCA program. This is a program that deals with the legal confiscation of money and property from alleged drug dealers. We stayed neutral on the issue, and the council approved rejoining the INCA program 4-1 the following week. In March, we did a forum on the American Patriot Act on our individual freedoms, which we just heard about, and Commissioner Aguano got a terrific panel together, and the only comment after, after the forum was, there's nobody in Congress that could have read the Act, it's 10,000 pages, before they voted on it, so the library thing is just one of the many scary things about this Act. In April, we're not going to have a regular forum. In April, we are co-sponsoring, along with other commissions and with the Fire Department, a video teleconference hosted by Cokie Roberts of ABC News, and it's entitled "Living with Grief: Coping with Public Tragedy." This is Hospice Foundation of America's 10th Annual National Bereavement Video Teleconference. It will take place on April 30th at 10:30 AM in the Sturgis Buildings, A and B at the Desert Healthcare Complex, and we're going to learn more about that Thursday, and our job is to get the word out to the community, to get the attendance up. In May, we're doing a student, student rights forum, and we discuss student rights and also bullying in high school, and again, Commissioner Aguano, we're going to get some students here in May and find out what's really going on, and what we can do to help the students. And in June, we're very fortunate, Commissioner Janis has written several bills that are up in Sacramento right now concerning elder abuse, and hopefully that's, these bills are going to form a law, so we're going to have in June a forum on elder abuse, and just the basics, I mean, what the law's going to be, and also, if you think an elderly person's being abused, where do you go, what do you do? And we're hoping to get big attendance, and that's going to be our forum in June. Other things we've done this year, the Human Rights Commission marched in the Black History Month Pride Parade. As we speak, we have our brochure, Creating a Hate-Free Community, it's being printed in Spanish, so we'll have it in English and Spanish next week. One of the things that I was proud of, on March 4th, I brought Police Chief Jeantron to meet the gay and lesbian community at Hunter's, we had about 80 people, Cindy Yucan was there from the Desert Sun, we had TV stations, Cindy Yucan dedicated the Saturday Column, complimenting the chief, the chief was great, he handled a lot of tough questions, people really were riding on him at first, but at the end of the evening, the chief won people over, and I'm going to thank David Reddy for picking the chief, that was excellent pick, we have a great police chief, and because the chief and I were such a hit, we're going to Toucans. On May the 12th, it's a follow-up, and, because we've been working on some things, and on May the 12th at 5:30 at Toucans, the chief will be appearing, we're going to tell what we're working on, we're going to talk, it'll be like a post-White Party discussion, and we're looking forward to that, we're going to get a lot of coverage on that, that's May the 12th at 5:30. And basically, the commission is humming, we're changing our business meetings, starting in July, to the second Monday of every month, and they'll be from 3 to 5, so no more nighttime meetings for the business meeting, and that's to save the city money. And that's my report.
What is it, humming?
Humming, yes, like a silo.
Boy, boy, I'm telling you. Any questions on human rights? Hmm, no. All right, that's got a historic site, I think you'll find this back in the Planning Commission piece?
Yes, we're page 20 and 21 of the Planning Commission report.
Thank you.
But I'd just like to go over a couple issues, if you, this is what we've done. It's been a challenging year, we had six new members of a seven-member board, so it's taken us quite a while to get up to speed, and right now, we're doing pretty well, all the board members are actively recruiting for new nominations for historic site designations. The proposal for the Historic Resource Survey are currently under review, and we're going to be interviewing two firms at the end of the month, so hopefully, the survey will be underway very shortly. We have one kind of critical piece of business before us right now, the diocese, the Diocese of San Bernardino has requested to declassify Our Lady of Solitude, which you probably all know, it's, it's actually Palm Springs' first Catholic church, it's on the corner of Alejo and Bolardo, it was designed by Albert Martin in 1930, and it was built by Elva Hicks, and it was designated a Class 1 site in 1985, and we're having one more go at reaching a compromise with them, but declassification of any historic site would be, you know, a great loss to the city, and it would be a terrible precedent, and we don't want to be the first board to end up with less historic sites than we started with. So...
Then you better add some new ones.
Yes. No, it would be bad, and...
It would be bad.
Since we've had such a hard time getting up to speed, we haven't added any sites this year, but we have a lot in the pipe for next season, but that's kind of a plus budget-wise, since we did no placking this fiscal year, we're actually not going to ask for any additional funds for the next year, and we'll roll over our money. So that's the end of my report. So that's the end of my report.
Questions on historic site preservation? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why do they want to be declassified? Or do they want to remodel that new hotel?
Well, it's actually been an issue that's been going on for a couple of years. They, you know...
With the stucco finish they had a problem with and a few other...
Well, they added a Mexican paver, Wayne's Coating, to the front of the church without coming before either the Planning Commission or the HSPB. And they added some, I guess it's kind of a finish behind those two niches in the front. And we asked that, we tried to reach a compromise and asked that that be removed. And they, it was actually a very interesting meeting today, because they claim they never wanted it to be designated, even though it's been designated for 18 years. And the building, the building also has a very large historic plaque on it, which they allowed to be, allowed it to be placked. And it's actually, we're all finding out that it's much more complicated than anybody thought to actually declassify historic site. So we're having, we have another month, hopefully, to resolve this issue, and hopefully, it won't become before the city council. So it's a minor issue, we feel, and, you know, except for that, the building is in, you know, pristine condition, the exterior, and it would be a shame to not keep it that way.
Well, fight the good fight, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else on the historic site? Otherwise, we'll go to airport. Chuck, what do you got for us?
Speaking from the silo.
You know you're going to have to live that down.
I just hope for this meeting, is all I hope.
Gee. Our annual report pretty much tells everything that's going on. We provided a lot of pictures for those of us who are reading-challenged, and they're airplane pictures, so your kids may get a kick out of them. I would call one thing in the report to your interest, and that is the sound installation program. We're on the last phase of it. We believe that there will be 12 homes, possibly as many as 18, that will not participate, for whatever reason they won't. The rest of the homes have participated, and it's worked out beautifully. You're going to ask why, and that was the first question that anybody would ask. Absentee landlords, people who don't want anybody in their house, no matter who the hell it is, sorry, who it is, nobody's coming in my house. There's the cross-section of reasons. But we've basically gone through some 300 houses here and done a lot of beautiful work, including in a lot of cases, new air conditioning, new doors, new windows. Chris is aware of all that, but it's a great project, and it's running very well. The last phase is starting now and should be done in the next year. So we're pleased about that. I just call your attention to that, because that's, people aren't aware of that. That was part of our agreement, if you will, when we expanded the runway, to take care of this, to find funds to do it and to provide it. And we have successfully done it, and I think it speaks well to our staff. I would also, before I get into some of the nitty-gritty of what's going on in the airport, I want to comment on the Chihuli Project. I see a lot of airports, just the nature of the fact that I travel a lot. Yes, some of them have great art, but they're always rotating on loan projects. You don't have airports that have incredibly great art as a permanent fixture in the airport. So I think we're very, very blessed with this, all, everything but the Chihuli right now, because it's new and it's absolutely beautiful. So I just want to compliment the public arts and the council for backing this and continuing to back it. It's a wonderful project.
You should also highlight there were down-valley cities that contributed.
Absolutely.
And a lot of private donors.
Lot of private donors.
Lot of generous people.
It's amazing how many people believe that public art is good, not just kept in someone's little private collection. So we're just very pleased.
Leo, hit the mic, would you?
Let me say one thing, because I don't think this was ever announced publicly in Palm Springs, and that is, Joanne McGrath gave us a challenge grant of $50,000 to make this thing happen, and because of that, she spearheaded getting a lot of this and caused us to get another $100,000 on top of that. So I would like for this to be in the permanent record. She was one of, and I was, I just saw her the other night and thanked her again, but there are other people that did it, but she was one of the great people that spearheaded this whole thing.
Well, she inspired others to be as generous as they could.
It is amazing. It's an amazing pulling together of an entire community to produce something really special. So I'm just very pleased about that. All right, let me tell you what's going on at the airport and what the future holds, as much as you can see in that glass ball called security. As you know, we have struggled through a winter season with the explosive detection system right there in the lobby. That has been a bigger-than-the-word challenge, and even though I kind of thought we might have chaos, it has worked as well as possible. The TSA, the people have been as cooperative and tried, as Tom Anthony, the head of the TSA here, wants our airport to be special. And he, they have tried to do a lot of things and have done a lot of things, and it's actually, it actually worked. It's still very crowded and so forth. But the project now is the point where we're talking about doing that behind the baggage system with newer equipment. We're talking with the TSA, and Tom is putting a lot of pressure on them to straighten out this whole process. So hopefully, by next year, we will see a, what they call an inline system, where it's behind the check-in counters, back in the baggage area, so we won't have to do this in two-step, three-step thing that is, it is confusing, and it's somewhat chaotic, because it takes up all that, we have a very narrow lobby anyway, takes up that lobby space and really makes it difficult to deal with. So I think that's coming along, and I think there's reason to believe that that's going to be, it's going to happen. The other thing that's going to happen is an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar project, or eight-million-dollar project, called the Southerly Terminal Access Road Reconfiguration Project. The rest of us would think of it as Inspection Plaza. That's, it's a big project, and it's going to look beautiful. It's going to be a sort of a pain, because obviously, we're going to have to shut the road both ways down, April 15. There's no way we can do this building without that. This building is going to look a lot like the airport terminal with, excuse me, with the tent effect. It's going to be very efficient. It's the only way we have studied and studied and studied that we can do it. Eventually, the eastbound route will be reopened, and that will probably, I can't tell you when that'll be, but we are hoping, the bid's out, they're getting ready to start moving ground. Where, the deal is that they need to be done by November 15, as we did with the parking lot downtown. I think that's manageable. They think it's manageable, and let's just hope they can do that before we get in the Thanksgiving season. That'll be done, and that'll be wonderful. This is, this particular project is totally funded by the TSA and the FAA, so we have, well, we have to watch the costs. We don't have dollars to go out to it. Airport, we had two things go on, and I would highlight this only because people don't understand a lot about airports sometimes. We had a, we're required every three years to have a real emergency disaster drill at the airport. We had that this year, and with the successful completion of that, we didn't, this year, we did not have burning fires and all that sort of thing, but we had a lot of mock things going on, and it was successfully accomplished. We were recertified as an airport. You say, "Oh, well, okay." But being certified as an airport is the most important thing an airport can do. Without that, we wouldn't even be able to open the door in the morning. And to ma, to make that certification takes a tremendous amount of effort on the staff's part, on the employees that work at the different airlines and the ticket counters. It's a magnificent tribute to the people who work at the airport. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that we are recertified, and I want to thank the people, all the people who worked very hard on that. One last thing, actually, two last things, and that's air service development. It's going along great. We, our traffic in February was up 17%. Now, that's an amazing thing. There are airports out there that's down 17%, believe me, still. Or more. We have been, this, the program that we are in, where we are actually out there talking to the airlines, is making a difference. We have some new summer service. We have Delta all year round now to Salt Lake City, which is a good improvement. That'll give us a lot more spar into the Delta system year-round. We have Horizon adding a 70-seat aircraft to the Seattle non-stop market, so that'll give us more seats into the Seattle market all summer long. I think that's very good. And while we don't have the March numbers, they appear to be very good. We won't know until the 10th, but they appear to be strong also, and that speaks well, because Easter is in April, and we're still doing a lot of business out there. So I think we will have three really dramatic months. February, which had an orange alert for 10 or 12 days, many airports went, people just stopped flying, because they didn't know what that meant, and they were concerned. Actually, our traffic was up just a little bit, so it speaks well to the fact that it's a destination, it's, people plan it a long time ahead, and they stick with it. So that, that's really very good. I'd point out that American Eagle is adding jets to the Los Angeles market, and we have two now, they have two out of nine now, and they plan to add three more come this fall. So that's, you know, that, those are all enhancements that are making our air service just really hum, okay? I brought along the first half of a two-part report. This is the economic impact study. Once again, fortunately, there are pictures, and it's worth, I'm going to pass it out, it's worth, because you, until you take a look at this, you don't realize the incredible impact that the, economically, that the airport provides in the valley. It's amazing. It's not just the salaries at the airport, it's the, there's a tremendous amount of flow. How it's all conceived, if you want to go to the guy at Arizona and have him explain it to you at the University of Arizona, that would be great, because I don't understand it, but the numbers are considered very accurate. So I'm going to pass that out. The other half, I'll pass out next time, hopefully, and that's our master plan overview. Our master plan is merely waiting for the economic, or the environmental review to be completed, which hopefully will be done in a month, and then the city council will pass on the master plan, and then we will be able to show it. But it's a process. The environmental review, as usual, has got little quirks in it and so forth, and it's, but it's coming along, and I don't see any problems. So you'll get this this time, and next time, you'll get the other one with the rest of the pictures. Other than that, I think we're very pleased with the cooperation of the TSA. We're very pleased how well the airport is running under a whole new set of rules. So that's where we are.
Very good. Questions, comments?
What are they going up to bid for the inspection terminal?
The inspection terminal is bid, and the construction starts on the 15th of April. So it's, it's a done deal. The bids came in just a little bit under where we estimated them, and I can't remember who the winner is. Jaeger is the, Jaeger. So they will do a good job. They're very, they're quality people.
Chuck, would you go to page five on this report you've given us?
Okay. Is there pictures, because otherwise, I'm in trouble.
It's a picture, it's a picture. I just want you to impress upon the cabinet, the council, and the listening audience, you've got a chart here that shows America, and PSP, that's us, is sort of a focal point, and there's a number of arcs that kind of go to cities around the nation. Can you give us an idea of the cities that have joined us in the past roughly two years?
Yes, there are, out of that, I'll have to count them. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, six cities.
You want to name those for us?
Well, we have Houston, we have Atlanta, we have renewed service to Denver, which was taken away when United walked away one day. We have Salt Lake City in the last three years, and San Jose, which was new to Alaska Airlines two years ago, I guess it was. So we have, we have a tremendous increase in destinations that are hub destinations.
And even Sacramento.
Yes, and Sacramento, I didn't see that in there. Oh, yeah, there it is.
And I do that, because, you know, since 9/11, flights have been canceled.
Oh, absolutely.
Loads have been dropping, everyone's struggling, and somehow, this airport has managed to increase the number of passengers.
Yes.
Coming and going, and increased the number of carriers, air carriers, and destinations. So I don't know how you're all doing it.
But the important part about some of these destinations is they're hubs, so they really are destinations to the world, Houston, Atlanta, and so forth. They are really important to us, and I can tell you that Delta Airlines is extremely pleased with their loads.
Atlanta's working good?
It's working very well, and they're very pleased, so...
How's Minnesota doing? Good carry on Minnesota?
Yes.
Minneapolis?
That's good. The Sun Country people, I don't know how they're doing. That's that second carrier. I don't know, but they, they run a charter golf business, and I assume they're doing pretty well, but I don't know that. It's one I don't know about. Are they doing okay, Barry? Yeah, they're, they're fine. They're happy.
I just think it's very impressive, because as you say, they're the hubs, and you can pretty much get from anywhere to one of these hubs and then get here.
Absolutely. I just went through one of these hubs to Brazil and just got back late last night, so it works.
Did you go through Seattle?
No.
Good.
I tried to go the other way, because it's a lot closer.
That's the right answer, by the way.
By the way...
Like, who's your traveling?
Brazil's a bigger country than the United States. It's forever to get there, trust me.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, and they're big silos.
Beautiful. All right, let's go to our last presenter tonight. Hal, what do you got?
It's been a very busy year. This is one report that I can say that inactivity is a positive report, because we have not had any appeals during the last 12 months. So that's a very positive report, because everyone's happy in the city of Palm Springs.
Well, I don't know if I go so far as to make that broad a statement, but I appreciate your thoughts there, sir.
Well, we like to think that they are. And everyone who visits us leaves here happy.
So should I instruct the listening audience, have a problem, they're not happy to go see you guys?
Come see me. We'll be the ambassador to goodwill.
Excellent. All right, well, there's your annual reports. I think many of you blended your funding requests in there. Do any of you have any additional things you were going to do? I think you kind of blended that in. We'll go to item three then, which is the sort of annual board and commission recognition dinner. This is traditionally held in June, and whatever date we have, we don't have any clear dates at this point from the convention center, do we? Be aware of any dates that have been set aside for us? Doesn't seem like it. Silence. I would ask perhaps then that we look at two dates and see if in fact the June 9th, because we typically do it on a Monday, I believe, it's sort of the, don't we do it on a Monday? We don't?
Friday.
We do it on a Friday? What have I been going to all these years?
Library Board.
The Library Board. Didn't know I was there. You want to do Friday the 13th?
Oh.
Does that do that for you? How about June 20th then? Let's try for the 20th, and again, we'll make some initial calls and see how that affects you, okay? Let's work from that one. And what's the typical time of this?
Four, six, or 6:30 is the same time?
Four.
Four.
Six.
Four.
Always rolling the basketball playoffs?
Just June 20th is the only date for the election.
I think so, yeah.
You want to pick one in July, maybe?
No. We don't do July.
That's June.
College.
Volunteers.
Okay, that takes care of that aspect. We'll now turn to this website presentation. Now, again, the intent here is to inform you as to what the website is currently.
That, you said two days?
Just the 20th. You want to take a quick recess, take a little break?
Yeah, June is one day, and 20 is the other.
Okay, okay. Let's take a look at the website then. Yeah, I do, too. All right, we'll take a, we'll take a quick recess, gentlemen.
And lady.
And lady. Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order and we'll go right into item four, which is the city website. Again, the intent here is to show you what we have, what we're working from now, and then perhaps we'll get a little staff report as to what kind of ideas we're looking at for future modification.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the boards and commissions. Several months ago, staff undertook a plan to redesign the city's current website. We formed a website committee consisting of the city clerk's office, our director of community affairs, our crack IT staff and myself to meet.
Crack?
Yes, they are, they are like crack troops. They're, they're ready to do the job. We met over a course of a few months to decide how we wanted to best present the city's website to the world. To kind of give you a framework of from where we started, the current site was launched four to five years ago. It underwent a major redesign of the homepage approximately eight months ago. What you're seeing now on the screen is the existing site. One of the concerns that we've had is that the existing site lacks consistency in the presentation. There's no coordination of the content on the site and each department has been allowed to essentially design their own pages, giving it the appearance that when you click on a department, as we're doing now, it looks like you leave the site. This is the fire department, for example. Even though this is part of our existing website, there is no consistency to the look or the, or the actual design of the site. So as a result, you're not even aware that you're still on the city's website. You look like you've left the website altogether. Because of these concerns, we decided we wanted to look at trying to bring some consistency in the presentation and look of the site so that we would be able to maintain the brand image of our site. Because it's very important to have a brand identity. So as you're being visited by various individuals, they realize that this is Palm Springs. This is the look and feel that we want to perpetuate in our, in our website design. So we've started to put together a proposed site, which I must add is in its beta version now. The proposed site is up here now. The site is undergoing very rigorous testing. We're adding information and items to it almost every day. What we've tried to accomplish by this new site is a consistent look throughout the site. So every page is of a constant theme or image. As you can see, here is one of the departmental pages. This is the fire department. This would be the constant theme throughout the website.
The fire chief.
The information is organized so that it's very easily accessible to the user so they don't have to go looking for it. If there are links within the page, if you want to go back to that, Glenn, to other information within the department or maybe external link to another site, it's readily accessible there on the single page. They don't have, a user doesn't have to wade through multiple pages to get the information they're seeking. So it's, it's right up front, available to the user, and we think it has a very good, convenient approach to providing the information that users are looking for. I want to talk a little bit about the homepage. So if you go back to that, Glenn. The homepage has a whole new navigation bar with drop-down menus to make it more convenient for people to go through the website. We also have provided better access to the information as you can see down on the lower left-hand quadrant, questions and answers there. That's just a tentative title for that area. But that will be frequently asked or most commonly asked questions that people have either when they call TeleWorks, which is our telephone, automated telephone system, or maybe that inquiries that come into the front desk at City Hall. That information will be posted in that section there. So it'll be readily accessible to anybody who has a question that we generally have information for and so that they can just easily go to that information without having to look through it for, through the site. Some other additional enhancements on the homepage include an events calendar, which not only you can see the news and events scrolling there on the left side, but if you click on it, it goes directly to a calendar. And you can go to the days, say go to the today's date, the 8th and... Well, as you can see, this is a beta. We were supposed to have tonight's council-cabinet meeting on there, but obviously it didn't make it there. But that's the purpose of the events calendar, so that people can go to the calendar, they can check out the date, and they can get information as to what's going on in the community. One of the other things is the picture there in the center. It's actually a slideshow. So if you would click on that, Glenn, you have different photos that are in our photo archives that this automatically scrolls through, or you can pick a picture. And our intent is to make these pictures actual postcards so that somebody who comes to our site can actually email one of these beautiful photos to another person electronically. And we think that would be a very nice way to present the community. And these are, these are photos taken by staff from around the community and we hope to add additional photos as we progress along here. One of the ideas we had is through the arts commission is to have a photo contest where people could submit photos and they would be judged. And we would have the selection of photos here on the website where people could vote online to select the best photos in various categories. And so that's an idea that we want to talk to the arts commission about doing. As I had said, the department pages will have a consistent look and feel under this proposed website. One of the, some of the other things that we're looking at doing in terms of improving the site include, but are not limited to, printable city forms and applications. For example, earlier, which is now part of the existing website, we put on the application for boards and commission members, which was downloadable. People could print it out on their own printer and fill it out and submit it to the city clerk's office. We hope to make that form and other forms like that, they can not only print them out, but they complete them directly online so that it makes it easier for people who have an interest in either doing business with the city, or in this case, applying for a particular board or commission, to make their application electronically. One of the other things that we are considering and ultimately will do is an e-news subscription service where people can give us their email and we will deliver to them current news or information or calendar events of what's going on in the city. This way, we can keep people informed about particular news items or events as they occur and so that they have instantaneous delivery of that information. One of the things that we're really excited about is streaming video, the ability to webcast city council meetings and other meetings. We have some examples here of what other communities have done with webcasting of their meetings. For example, the city of Los Angeles, which Glenn will bring up here, has their government access channel, similar to our Channel 17, available directly off the internet. And you can watch it anywhere in the world as long as you have access to a computer. And this is what's coming up now. And it's, it's really interesting. And this is an area that cities are entering into so that they can deliver this type of content directly to their constituents who may not be able to come to a council meeting or away on vacation or may be a seasonal resident and want to watch what's going on in their community from afar. This is the actual broadcast that's currently happening on Los Angeles's government channel. One of the other examples is the city of Cupertino. Cupertino not only webcasts their council meetings, but they also store them for archival purposes so that if you missed a meeting and you want to go back and watch a meeting, you could go by date and actually select the meeting and watch it. And we're going to bring up a meeting here. They not only do their council meetings, but also their various boards and commissions. As you can see, we're on the planning commission page now. We're going to bring up the, one of the meetings here. The city clerk has found an interesting application, which we're going to investigate into. But the technology allows a community to take a meeting and break it up into video clips and a link or assign those clips directly to an agenda item. So for example, if you have a public hearing and you just want to watch that public hearing, you go to the posted agenda on the website, you click on the item, you could get a staff report for that item, or you could click on another link that would take you to a video clip for that particular item, and you can watch only that item. You wouldn't have to wade through the entire meeting until that item came up. So you could really pick and choose what your interests are. So if you have an interest in that one item, you could get the information on that one item.
Troy, I think on the Cupertino site, I don't know if you're going to show it, but on the archive on the council, it's a split screen. You bring that up, Randy?
Yeah. Yeah, we're...
Yeah.
Looks like it's coming up now.
Got a picture on one side, and actually the documents are on the other side? Is that how it works, Lee?
So this is the Cupertino site, and Glenn, what did you bring up, a planning commission meeting?
I'm not sure what it was. See, I think it was a planning commission.
A city council. As you can see, we're still constrained by bandwidth. It does take...
Loading time, yeah.
A little bit of time to load some of these large video files, so this could be a constraint for some people, especially if they're using dial-up. But as both DSL and cable modem services become more proliferated throughout the country, I see that this type of technology and application will definitely be something that many agencies will utilize to keep their constituency well informed of what's going on.
The Cupertino council is...
Yeah.
Yeah. So here's the, I guess, the schedule for that particular meeting, and it's, as you can see, playing now in the background. So this would go on, and of course, you could go through the entire meeting, which we're not going to spend the time going through tonight, but you can see the actual videos coming up right now. So that's an example of streaming video.
Troy, can I just have him scroll that forward so he can get past the swearing-in and get into some sort of meat of the item? Move the thing forward, because I think it would be nice to see the... If they do show the documents on the right side. This is a site that Lee showed me last week. This is public comments, it looks like, huh? But it just allows you to see the whole meeting.
That seems like great.
And you got a document on both sides, so you can follow it, read the documents. Great.
And be able to go to the specific item?
Right to the item, yeah. And as the clerk says, you can hot-link right to the item on the agenda and pull up that item both on document and on video. If you want to hear the public comments on that, I mean, it's a great tool. Okay.
So as it relates to tonight's council cabinet, what we wanted to ask the commissioners and board members for some input on is your exact pages that we're going to be designing. Now, we're also... We're going to design the pages for the various commissions and boards with the same theme and format that we would have for the departmental pages, but what we want direct input on is what you would like to see in those pages, because you're going to drive the content. We are simply going to review that content to make sure it's consistent with everything else we're trying to accomplish, and we will put that content, post that content directly to those pages. Some of the examples that we wanted to cite tonight to kind of give you an idea of what other communities and their various boards and commissions are doing with their pages is the city of Cupertino, if you want to go to that, Glenn. Cupertino, I think, has one of the better websites in California today. They really have laid it out very nicely. But in terms of the actual commission and board sites, every... It's Northern California. Every page is consistent and has a content that's pretty much identical to that of the other boards and commissions. And so as Glenn brings that page up here, we can take a look at some examples. What they've essentially done is laid out the information for the agendas, what is coming up both in the upcoming weeks and then prior committee or commission agendas. They also have sections. So for example, if a commission has a publication that they've produced, that would be posted on the site. One of the examples that we think would be an excellent item to place on the website would be this guide here that was published by the Arts Commission. Again, it's the Public Arts and Historic Site Tour Map. This can be done. Any document that we do that's done electronically can be converted and placed on the website and can be made printable in a PDF file format, which, for those of you who use the Internet, know how valuable that is, because you get the document that you are basically looking at here. It's just not nicely bound and glossy-finished paper. And if you don't have a color printer, of course, it's not going to be color, but it at least gives you instant access to that information, and we feel that that would be an excellent way for our committees and boards to post information that they have generated so that other people can have access to it. This is what site... Or what commission is this, Glenn?
Still Cupertino, isn't it?
It's Cupertino, but...
Audit Committee.
The Audit Committee. So you can see, this is their agenda, and if you go back one screen there, you can see the layout of their homepage here. It has a little brief description of what the Audit Committee... Well, this is Agenda Minutes, but go down a little bit more into the page, Glenn, if you would. You can see there's the meeting dates and times, the location, the current agenda, the prior agenda, and then they have pertinent information as it relates to that particular commission, which we would like to make available to you. So if there's external links that you feel are important to your commission or what you do, we would definitely want to post that information on your page so that as people are looking into the Human Rights Commission, they could go to other sites that may contain information on that topic or on a subject matter that you have an interest in. So that's kind of the input we're looking from each of you tonight, and of course, it doesn't have to be tonight. This is a process that's going to be ongoing, and as you come up with ideas or suggestions on how you'd like to see your particular page laid out under this format, we would certainly welcome those comments. The other city site I just want to briefly go to is Santa Cruz. If you could go there, Glenn. Santa Cruz has done another remarkable job in how they present their information on their committees, commissions, and boards, and this is... The wonders of modern technology, although this one, I think, is user error.
All technology starts with a user, okay?
So here's the city of Santa Cruz, again in Northern California. If you'd go to the section on committees there, Glenn, we'll kind of look at what they've done. Ultimately, we hope that our homepage has this kind of look, where information is compartmentalized and made available directly off the homepage, so that people do not have to go through individual pages to find the types of information they're looking for. This is the city government look on this side there. It should be commissions and boards. Go back to the homepage. It was...
Well, maybe we won't show you the city of Santa Cruz. But yeah, there it is. Okay.
Well, suffice it to say, there are many different examples of how you can present the information. You kind of have the general idea of what we're trying to accomplish. So again, we would welcome your comments, your input. You can either directly feed those comments to my office, either email, in writing, or just when you see me. Let me know what you'd like to see, and we'll certainly make our best effort to present the information that you would like to have to represent your commission or board. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions for council or any of the commissioners.
Now, Hal, I'm sure you've got 100 ideas running through your head right now on how you can improve your... And we're going to get to you in just a minute, I'm sure, but just to give you an example, historic site preservation can cite the buildings, make a number of photographs, put a little descriptive piece on it, put a map, put whatever background you want on it.
We have the guide that we were just updating now, too, that has... Well, we have 44 historic sites, too, that could be listed with, and we have already have text about each of them. But I have one suggestion. You know, the Public Arts did this project to come up with this Welcome to Palm Springs typography and signage for the city, and I think it might be very appropriate for your Welcome to Palm Springs heading, instead of the kind of florid version you've got on there.
Standardizing.
I think it'd be really great.
Good idea.
Until we absolutely codify that signage on the one that we accepted, the one that we have now on the north end sign is the one that the Blue Ribbon Committee and everybody likes so much, the one, you know, the one that's up by the tramway.
Yes.
Everybody loves that script. When I say everybody, everybody that ever has dealt with this or had a hand in the project loves that script. So either that or the one that we liked on the commission, and when we picked the city signage, is the one that we switched to. You guys have seen it. We like the new signage.
Will the website have the ability for forms to be printed or filled out and then sent back in electronically?
Yes. Initially, we'll have forms that'll be in PDF file formats. They can be printed directly onto the user's printer. Some forms, like the one that the city clerk's department has for commission board applications, is already... It could be filled out by the user online. We hope to add additional forms like that in the near future.
So if you wanted to rent the Showmobile or facilities acquisition or use of the pool, you could fill out those forms otherwise. And if you've got a forum going on, you could actually say, okay, what are your concerns? What are your questions? We're looking for ideas. So it becomes interactive. It's not just a one-way avenue of information.
Right. Are there any file...
Stay in your silo.
Maximum file size and that. I know we have with Scott, Mike, Lois Ware's put together, we put out every six months a very lengthy schedule of all of the activities that we have, the Parks and Recreation Department, that if that was able to be able to put that electronically on there and update it when Lois Reed does it, I mean, it's got a tremendous amount of information on it, would be, you know, great to have, if the files are just basically unlimited.
I think the only constraint we have is, you know, what the user's bandwidth is. I mean, if they're using dial-up and we have a 10-megabit downloadable file, it's unlikely that they're going to want to do that. But if they have DSL or cable modem service, then of course, a 10-megabit file is nothing, and they can easily do that. We're not going to establish, I think, any limits on the size of the file. We're going to try to provide the information so that people have access to it on our site, so they don't necessarily have to come into City Hall or call up City Hall and request that information.
Two things. One, I think the photo contest is sensational.
Yeah, it's great stuff.
So I'll get it under new business. But the other thing is, which I mentioned to you when you were over here, I think one thing we should shoot for is as much color as possible. I think that's going to be something that they'll expect from us, and like when I was looking at the top, that to me should just shout color, because, you know, you think of Palm Springs as bright.
Festive, exciting, yeah.
Exciting, and I noticed on all these, there's a little bit of seriousness to it, and I think you need a lot of punch.
Good. I'd like to see, I don't know, it's not even out of a commission, I don't believe, but some of the history of Palm Springs, although there is no history commission, there's no one in charge of it. People do call. I think the library can attest to this. They call and they look for background information and research. It'd be nice if there was some access, now whether that's just through the archivist or otherwise out of the library, but just some of the aspects, some chronologies or otherwise. We get some office requests in our offices from students around the country, if not the world, saying, can you tell us something about your city from every letter of the alphabet? It's like a standard sort of third to eighth grade report, A to Z, and call this, pick a city anywhere in America, and then put it in there. It'd be nice if it was just there. So we haven't got to compile this, of which we've never been able to do, because no one's got time to do an A to Z kind of thing, but just simple things. And is there an internal search engine? So as opposed to doing FAQs, if I'm looking for something, can I just go in and say, I'm looking for Frank Bogert? Hit the button, and up comes Frank Bogert stuff? Do we have an internal piece of that nature?
Yes, there's a... Actually, on the homepage, there was a search engine that you can just put in a keyword, and it'll go through the site looking for that request. With respect to history, we will have a lot of historical information on there. Matter of fact, the IT staff has already been working with the Historical Society to scan some of the early historical photos, so that they will be available online. So we'll have a historical photo archive that people can go through and look at the captions and see what, you know, the history of Palm Springs from a photographic standpoint. We're also going to have demographic information, economic development information. There'll be a plethora of information available to anybody who wants to access it via the site.
It's not a dinosaur, okay? Plethora. Plethora.
Mr. Mayor?
Again, yes, Mr. Mills.
It wasn't silent.
But it ends in a vowel, so it's qualified. Mr. Mills, I believe you have the floor, sir.
You'd never know it.
I'll try to get the order here, sir. Point of order, point of order.
I noticed when we were looking at the examples when they were up there, and the Santa Cruz example was up, and Troy made the comment that he hoped that we could get like that, and I was thinking just the opposite. I hope we can't get like that. That was real regimented. It looked like they were selling things versus what you really started out with, with the Palm Springs site. It's, you know, like Leo said, a lot of color, a lot of playfulness, a lot of easy-to-read, and not a lot of junk on there, so you don't see so much. And so, and just, I mean, you can still have the information on there, you just get there a little slower way. And I think that plays more for the atmosphere that we have here. It's relaxed, and I think that should be reflected in the website. And Mr. Oden agrees.
I would imagine it's based on the user's... If you're looking for information, the tendency is the more compressed it is, the faster you can get to it. If it's a leisurely stroll, I can see what you're saying, and I don't know how to address the proper response, because in structuring a website, as I'm sure the guys in IT knows, you can do anything you want, and some of the ways in which you try to find that trigger button that says, I want to go here, can be too complex, because I don't know how to get to it. So you've got to keep on scrolling page after page. The more you can concentrate it, it's all right there. I want to hit this. So it's a fair balance about getting the information. I know what you're saying about being playful and colorful and representing Palm Springs, but it depends on what the intent of the user is.
And, Mr. Mayor, I was really, really more referring to the homepage, because that's what we looked at, was the homepage from Santa Cruz, I thought, and that's really what I was referring to.
You know, and one thing where I agree with you is, when you go on like AOL and you're looking for something, it becomes complicated. But if you go for Google and you put a name down, it does the work for you. I mean, it's sort of like, it takes you where you want to go. So if you put down just a key word, it takes you there. And if our site were more like Google, it will... It makes it easy. At least, that's what I always find myself doing. I'll just put down a key word. If somebody says, well, why don't you find out something? Can you find out something for me if somebody's not computer-literate? And I go right to that, and I think that's what we maybe should aspire to.
Good. Okay. So again, not so much you want your input today nor tonight, but just be aware of the fact that we're trying to reconstruct, reconfigure the website. And again, the information flow goes both ways, not just people draw the information, but you're trying to extract data. You've got users that are coming in on the airport. Did you find your flight okay? What kind of flights you're looking for? It may be important to give it to Delta, saying, I got guys asking for flights out of Pittsburgh or otherwise, and helps to formulate things. So it's up to you to figure out what it is you're looking for. Okay?
Troy, do you have a deadline for this, that you want us to meet?
Well, as we mentioned to the council several weeks ago, our hope is to have this operational by the first of June. It may be, give or take, a few weeks, but we'd like to see it done within the month of June.
Could I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
That you have an appointment with each of the chairs, set up an appointment with each chair, and then you can go over their views individually, personally, and you can have some dialogue back and forth. That way, I think, probably with your expertise, you can kind of guide us through to make sure that we end up with a compatible project in total.
We'd be pleased to do that.
Yeah, you could do a subcommittee out of each of your commissions, get a couple of representatives there, your senior staff member, you know, and hit the interface.
We have to get it on an agenda. My next meeting is day after month. I can't get it on for another month.
I think it's risen subsequent to the post into the agenda.
Well, also, once your webpage is designed, it's always going to be a work in motion anyway.
Yes, sir, I agree with that.
That's our intent. This is an evolutionary process.
You know, can be changed. Okay, good. My door is always open.
Where is it?
Great response. Glad to hear it's open. Now, where is that door? Oh, that I can't tell you, sir. I'm very sorry. All right, that takes care of the website. Troy, thank you. Staff, IT, thank you, gentlemen. Always good work. Let's go to item five, meeting dates. Apparently, the issue of the second Tuesday has conflict with Desert Highland, and we want to make sure that it doesn't happen again in the future, as indicated, a number of people do attend those meetings. So we may want to look at a different Tuesday than perhaps the one we're looking at so far.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I just have a question. Has any thought been given to making the semi-annual rather than quarterly meetings?
Oh, no.
I just asked.
This is just too much fun.
I just asked.
Yeah, I know.
I just asked. No thought has been given to it.
Well, it depends who you... Well, it depends who you ask. I can't tell what anyone's thinking at this table already.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the first Tuesday. That might be in a more appropriate... Does that conflict with lots of other things, or... Since it appears that you guys want to move to Tuesday, is that the...
I can only say, if I may, that the first Wednesday of the month is a city council meeting, and to have a Tuesday and a Wednesday where they get in... I don't think that's fair to us.
Yeah.
I know that, but theoretically, they're shorter.
If you request a little shorter.
I've been working on that.
Yeah, we have the same problem with the third, too, then, right? We're looking at the second. Or the fourth. It's Tuesday, so careful.
We could go to July 15th. Is it July? Is that the next month, Madam Clerk?
Well, yeah, because you can have your... Well, it depends. Usually, your dinner takes... Usually, your dinner takes the place of your meeting, so that's up to you, but usually, your quarterly meeting of June, July is the dinner.
Okay.
So...
So it goes to September, then?
Yes. Typically, yes. See what I'm saying? Yeah.
We'd go to October, wouldn't we?
Yeah, yeah. Count three.
October, and then it's the third, the 21st?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
If you'd like, we certainly could, since it is quarterly, we could do the cabinet meeting on one of the study session days, weeks.
The way we did it before, but we had so much on the study session agendas that it... Well, no, that it...
Well, I think we're starting to clear... Excuse me. I think we're starting to clear many of these larger projects off the agenda, and we may be able to go back to that.
And we try to schedule this meeting in advance of our quarterly budget meeting, so we got input from you, and then we're into our budget meeting, so that there's a relationship between this meeting and the quarterly budget meeting. That's how it's been structured in the past.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
Since our dinner will take care of our next quarterly meeting, I think we have enough time to decide whether or not a Wednesday night can accommodate that meeting. If it can, then fine, we'll move back to a Wednesday. If not, then it gives us ample opportunity to discuss it. We'll have to decide tonight.
So what you're saying, Mr. Oden, then, on your dinner meeting, you want to do just a short meeting with the commissioners to set the October meeting date? Is that what you're saying or not?
No, I'm saying, we have plenty of time between July and October to decide whether or not that next meeting should be on a Wednesday or a Tuesday.
Based on council load at that time?
Yes.
Okay, so we won't schedule for now. But we will try to move it off at least the second Tuesday. We'll find out whether it goes back to a Wednesday or not, but second Tuesday will not be utilized.
Perhaps.
Okay, all right. Let's then look at reports or requests. Are there any? You've already had that opportunity, haven't you? Well, then, our future agenda items are always up for consideration. If you have any, just let us know. Other than that, it is now 9:33, and seeing no further business before this, we'll stand adjourned.